Good evening. Good evening, I'm the Southfield Board of Education, I'll come to order. My name is Darryl McCannan, my honor is serving as Board President. Is that right?
I'm Brad Williams, Secretary for the Southfield Board of Education. Michael Cool, Treasurer.
Nathaniel Morris, Board Trustee.
Your Honor Minister, Trustee. Please, the White House, the Lincoln address, representative. Senator Peter, Southfield High School's representative.
Wanda Cook Robinson, Superintendent.
Linda Wood, Associate Superintendent for Insurance.
David Turner, Associate Superintendent for Human Resources and Labor Relations.
Debbie Tronson, Associate Superintendent of Threat and Emergency.
And keeping record of our proceedings is Mr. Cole Christian on camera in the back. We have Chuck Capus and we have the new person doing our audio. Make sure I get this right, Arianna Guyden, is that correct? Welcome, Arianna. Okay, I'd like to start, we can start with the President, please. Who, he can lead us.
I'd like to lead you. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Welcome, it's good to have everybody here tonight. Got another great meeting, another layout, some of the great things going on in Southfield Public Schools. First of all, let's start with our student representatives and I forgot what the order was last one, but I'll go with the Senate computers first this time.
Good evening, this is my report for Southfield High School. Southfield High School ran first place in the community's prize category of schools. The scholars' induction was held on Wednesday, November 2nd, in the Southfield High School library. Seventy members were inducted, five of the total members were twenty. About one-third of the students may be honor roll for the first card marks. These students will receive an honor gift on Wednesday, October 24th. Because Southfield, oh, Southfield High School has reached its second month without any physical altercations. Because of this, students are granted a dress down day on Friday, November 24th. On October 21st, council members attended the 2011 Mr. Bruce symposium. The students enjoyed the guest speakers and enjoyed the series. The Blue Jays marching bands proved victorious in E Court High School. The Blue Jays flipped the competition, earning their second grand championship. Last Friday, the Lady Day volleyball team won the district championship. They have won five consecutive district championships. The Blue Jays football team was also victorious. They won their district championship last Saturday, November 6th. They will advance to the next level, playing Mother Right this Saturday. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. President. And now, who is the Southfield Relay for Life school, Rachel Webb.
Hello. October 13th was the Princeton Review Free Sports Back Study Session. This is where the students review their test scores and documents along with the Princeton Review Back Study. On October 27th were the Fall Camp Teacher Conferences from 3:30 to 5:30 and again from 6:30 to 8:30. On October 29th, the National Honor Society hosted the annual Halloween Boo Rock and there was a really good turnout, things about coming each for them. On November 2nd, we began our cancer food drive. Today, November 9th, the doctor sent us from Livingston College conducted auditions for our senior musicians. Yesterday, Southfield Laker Girls Basketball Team started trial. And again, today, November 8th, the International Doctor's Society extended essay creativity actions. Members of teachers met with students to make sure they are on path with these two parts of the program. Tomorrow, November 9th, will be the National Honor Society Ceremony. On November 11th will be our first blood drive of the year sponsored by the Student Congress. And on November 29th will be our National Honor Society induction ceremony and auditorium from 7 to 8:30. November 11, on November 12th, excuse me, the One Act Play is starting on November 12th and What Are We Going To Do With Mama will start at 7:00 PM. And on November 12th will be the Women's Dance Concert at 7:00 PM in auditorium. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We also have on our agenda recognition by the Board of our Superintendent. On Friday, November 18th, the Torch of Wisdom Foundation will present its changing tomorrow today, recognizing local heroes award to our Superintendent, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, as a local hero because of her diligent work in education, for the positive difference she is making in improving the lives of many individuals, and to recognize her as a strong role model to young African-American youth. This event will provide an opportunity to raise community awareness about the successes of Southfield Public Schools. We congratulate our Superintendent, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, on this award.
Thank you.
Now, we're just gonna move right to the report of the Superintendent, Dr. Cook Robinson.
Good evening, to the Board and the community. I want to begin by giving a shout out to Southfield High School. Three hundred and forty-three students made the honor roll, that's thirty-three percent of their student population, and I want to ask for a round of applause for that. I want to send a message to Mr. Horn that they deserve a dress down day. I think they'll be happy about that. I want to begin with one information for this evening. We're gonna begin with a presentation by the American Cancer Society, and I'd like to invite Dana Harvey and her team to the podium for a presentation.
My name is Dana Harvey, and I am the Chair for the Southfield Relay for Life. It's a fundraiser for the American Cancer Society, and myself along with the team, Chiara Clayton, who is our community rep, as well as Luana Turner-Jefferson, who is our development chairperson. We want to thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight. I'm not sure if you are aware of what the South, what the Relay for Life is with the American Cancer Society, but it's an annual fundraiser, one of our largest, where we like to bring awareness and celebrate survivorship for those who are in touch with cancer. We hold it annually, and last year it was held at the Southfield High School Field and Track, and we raised a considerable amount of money. I'm gonna let Chiara give you a little bit of information about how much we raised, but more importantly, what we wanted to recognize, the participation of the Southfield public school system and the high school students that participated in last year's relay. We want to thank them for their efforts, and I'm gonna let Chiara run down the list really quickly of the teams and how much money they raised and what that partnership and support looked like.
Thank you, Dana. Good evening, my name is Chiara Clayton, I am the Southfield Area Community Representative with your American Cancer Society. And first of all, just want to thank this body for allowing us to come, your Superintendent and to everyone here. Thank you very much for allowing us to come today. We really just want to say thank you, as Dana said, Relay for Life is our signature fundraiser that we do across the country, and it's how the American Cancer Society is raised, is able to raise the funds that we do to fund cancer research and reservices to those dealing with cancer. And last year, with the city of Southfield, we really partnered with the Southfield Schools. And I'm happy to say that the Relay for Life raised thirty thousand dollars right here in Southfield last year for the American Cancer Society, that's good, right? And we had twenty-four teams that made up our walkers, and out of those twenty-four teams, seven of those were from Southfield Public Schools, Southfield High Schools specifically. So we wanted to say thank you for that, and out of that thirty thousand dollars, the Southfield Schools were able to raise just over six thousand dollars of that. So can we raise a round of applause for that? And I just wanted to highlight the schools that participated and say publicly, thank you. I'm gonna start with first saying thank you to Southfield High School. We utilized the track to have the walk, we actually used that site as our venue, so we want to say thank you to Southfield High School. But I really wanted to highlight Southfield Lake of High School, because out of our seven school teams, Lake of made up five of those teams. So we just wanted to say thank you for that. And we also had Southfield Regional Academy, and also we had University High School to also participate. So we just wanted to come and say thank you, and let the Board know what your schools are doing. I heard the two reports from the two young ladies in the high school, so you guys are doing big things, but you're also giving back to the community. So we felt it very important to kind of highlight that, to say that students and young people, and they really kept our bit going. Relay for Life is a twenty-four hour walk, so people come, they camp out for twenty-four hours over the course of a weekend at Southfield High School Track, and they take turns walking the track, the teams that are there. And out of those, either battling cancer, those that have been lost to cancer, and to raise awareness for cancer. And out of the twenty-four hours, I can say that the high school students kept it going. They were up all night, they walked all night, surprisingly, right? But they not only were up, but they walked, they participated. We had a fifteen-year-old cancer survivor from Southfield Lake of High School who walked in our Survivor Lab, his name is Brandon, and he's, his family was there, and it was just really, really touching to see, not just adults, but youth from this community participating. So that's really why we're here, to say thank you to those schools. And we have a student here, I'm sorry, come here, come here. She was actually a team captain, this is Jeray, who's team captain from Southfield Lake, so she's here kind of representing the students. And I want for her to share, we don't have a lot of time, to share quickly your experience and what it meant to be a team captain.
Hello, everyone, my name is Jeray Jefferson, from Southfield Lake of High School. I was the team captain for the Southfield Lake of High School, Rosies, we're a committee within our NHS, and to me, this is my second year chairing this committee within NHS, and we participated in Relay for Life my tenth grade years, and we didn't go, you know, full force with trying to collect money and raise awareness, so when I got the opportunity to chair the committee, I was like, you know, we gotta do better, so I kind of pumped my girls up. We're a group of young ladies, and we try to aware people, raise awareness about women and things that deal with women, and tried to mentor the girls within our school about certain issues, and cancer touched me personally with some of the women in my family, and I just knew that this was something that I wanted to be a part of, so when we got the opportunity to participate again, I just knew that we had to go full force this time. So, we're gonna do it again this year, and I just want to say that we were the top high school team, all right? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Luana Turner-Jefferson, I am the team development chair for the Relay for Life. If you don't know anything about the American Cancer Society, or if you've never been touched by cancer, this organization provides various opportunities for a cancer survivor, a cancer patient, a family of cancer victims, and it is probably one of the unsung heroes of nonprofits. I'm a cancer survivor, this is mine, right here, but she does it all on her own. So, I want to say thank you to Mr. Spryzak for allowing his students and being behind his students in their efforts for, not just the American Cancer Society, but for all of the nonprofits that they support, as well as Southfield Lake of, Southfield High, University, and S-Rac. This year we'll be going after the middle school. I have a son that's leaving, I've already talked to Mr. T., and we're getting ready to work with them with the new mini-relays. We've been working with the kids that go to field zone, so we'll be doing a lot of things, so you'll be seeing a lot and hearing a lot from us. So, just putting out there, I expect to see some of you out there as team captains. I'm relentless, I'm a real pit bull when it comes to the American Cancer Society and the relay. So, all I ask is if you know somebody that's a cancer survivor, we do have a cancer survivor lab, if you know somebody that is, that was lost to cancer, we recognize those people, those loved ones during the walk, and all we ask for you to do for us is to give us your support. And we want to, I want to say personally, thank you to Southfield for what you do for our students. It's not just what us parents do, but you instill in them a reason to give back. First of all, you allowed Southfield High School to let students track, and for that we say thank you. So, it is with your blessings that we do, we were able to do what we did, so again, thank you. And I just have a little, I don't want to cut you off.
This is just a token, these were the bags that we gave to our team captains at the relay this year, so we brought one for you to bring a little bit of relay. Relay for Life 2012 is coming to Southfield High School, we're working to solidify the date, but it's looking like it's gonna be May 19th through the 20th. If you're interested, we have flyers that we can hand out. I would love representation from Southfield High School. We utilized the track, but we didn't have any students from the school there, so we're really trying to get some Southfield High School students involved this year, if I could just make a plug, and any other school. So we have flyers, and just say thank you. And lastly, if you know of anyone who needs the American Cancer Society, the money that we raise goes to fund an eight-hundred number. We are a nationwide organization, you can call eight-hundred-two-two-seven-two-three-four-five and be connected with free resources nationwide. Eight-hundred-two-two-seven-two-three-four-five, it's on your flyer. Also have cards, so if you need us, please call, and we hope to see everybody in May. And again, thank you to this body for allowing us to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At our last board meeting, we had, under community participation, one of our students from Southfield Lake of who came to the podium and shared with us some issues that she was having with the online program. I've asked our online administrator, Mr. George Chapman, to investigate those issues, and he has an update for the Board this evening.
Good evening to members of the Board of Education, Superintendent, and members of the community. I just wanted to give a brief update as to an investigation that we undertook with the assistance of the Principal of Southfield Lake of High School, Mr. Joseph Spryzak, his administrative team, as well as with the assistance of our Director of Technology, Howard Uzo, to investigate these concerns the student brought up. What was revealed was that there were a couple isolated incidents at the building that we wanted to address in our speech with you tonight. There were, for some students, about four or five students, there were issues with blocks on websites for, that was required for students to be able to access in order to complete work for their online class. We worked with ITC, that has now been resolved. There was, on the part of the online preventer vendor, students that enrolled in AP Physics and AP Chemistry courses, there were several textbooks that had been delayed with delivery. Again, working with Genesee Intermediate School District, and the provider, that too was resolved. As a matter of fact, the online provider in Genesee Intermediate Schools actually refunded the district monies for those textbooks, as well as for the course enrollment for those students affected. I actually had an opportunity to meet with parents directly at Southfield Lake of High School during their parent-teacher conferences to address any type of issues. I only met with four parents. Parents seemed to be very satisfied with the actions of the district and the actions of the building administration. In addition to these measures, we also worked with the principal, as well as with Ms. Wood, to provide students in AP Physics and AP Chemistry courses with additional lab time to complete required lab assignments. So there's now a program for those five students. They meet Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday in the morning from, before school starts, from seven in the morning till seven forty-five approximately. This is in addition to the course time they have during the regular school day, but we felt it was really important to make sure that we gave those students all the time that they needed to complete their required lab experiments and so on and so forth. To date, our investigation has revealed through Aventha, as well as Genesee ISD, my office, as well as with ITC, there was no errors in course content relative to the tests that were being taken by students. This was a two-week investigation that was conducted by the provider, Aventha Learning, speaking with the online teacher of the student that was affected, and again, it appears that there was a miscommunication in terms of being able to access online materials in the course, e-textbooks, so on and so forth, but there was no evidence of any error in content for those courses. Nonetheless, Aventha agreed, because of the number of students we have enrolled in online courses, to refund the course costs, and also to provide students with a new teacher if they so chose. I'm not sure if that happened, but that was not shown presented. The main point is that with any new program, there are some hiccups, and I definitely want to acknowledge that. However, in terms of the broadness of those hiccups, if you will, there were very few students affected. I definitely apologize to those students and their families. They seem to be satisfied with the actions taken by my office, as well as the actions taken at the building level. And that is the conclusion of my report. Unless there are any questions from the members of the Board.
No questions, you mean that they're reimbursed for the books and the courses?
Correct.
That means they're not taking the courses?
No, they are taking the courses. No, we have, within the district, we have approximately two-hundred-and-seventy students that are enrolled in online courses, whether they are seat time waiver, meaning completely online in high school, or taking one or two courses in comprehensive high schools. Our execution on the district side of enrollment of students was textbook perfect. There were issues on the part of the content provider in those isolated incidences, as well as the intermediary agency, Genesee Intermediate School District, which has the regulatory oversight of the state seat time waiver program. Because of that, Genesee, as well as Aventha, agreed to refund the district any costs incurred for those students as a courtesy. But those students are enrolled in the courses, they have their textbooks, they have their lab kits, they have all the materials, it's just that in act of good faith and goodwill, Genesee and the course provider agreed to reimburse the district and refund us with those costs in those, in instance of those five students.
Do you think you can just keep that like, you know, I mean?
Absolutely.
Put it on your mind, you're gonna question the Board by much enough, give me much enough.
I'll be more than happy to come back to the Board if you want every month, that's perfectly fine. I'm just offering it.
Thank you. I wanted to update the Board on the situation that we had at Burning. For those in the community that are not aware, about a week ago Sunday, at about ten-thirty in the morning, as I prepared to leave for church, I received a phone call that our boiler at Burning was under about seven feet of water. When I got to the building, it was truly flooded, and the team was already there, led by Dennis Gregory, who has done an outstanding job, he and Leslie Smith, on handling this problem. What we did, we got the insurance and the restoration folks in to start cleanup, but we also had to look at what was the cause of the problem. What happened at Burning was that under the computer room, the pipe that flows up under there burst, and so water was then being released. When the boiler was submerged, it hit the alarm, and that's what told us something was wrong. So we had to close school on Monday and Tuesday. On Wednesday, it looked like we might be able to open, but we had to test the air quality. So, to make sure that everything was fine before the students returned, I closed school for the entire week. Now, that did cause some hardship on parents, and so we have been working with Champions so that we can find a solution to the latch key or the daycare issues that they have. And I'd like to share with the Board the resolution that we have come to. The Southfield Public Schools Administration, and Board, and Champions are committed to partnering to help get the lives of families back to normal after our situation at Burning. Understanding that you were forced to make other arrangements for your children, and in some cases incur additional expenditures, Southfield Public Schools and your Champion families have arranged a one-time credit for last week's tuition. Southfield Public Schools will contribute funds on the behalf of all of those parents, and Champions will process credit for the remainder of the balance. This measure will enable the children to attend programming with no interruption, and more importantly, no financial burden on the parents. So I want to say thank you to Champions also for working with us so that we can support our parents. I'd also like to share with the Board this evening just a snippet of an opportunity that I had last month. The mayor of Southfield, Mayor Brenda Lawrence, called and asked if I would accompany her on a mission with the US delegation of mayors to Saudi Arabia. While there, they would not only interact around business opportunities, but have an opportunity to visit the school system and to, and universities, and to look at how things are done there. What you see on the screen here is the entire, go back, go back one, the entire delegation that went, I was the guest of Mayor Lawrence, as you see it in the picture, and the person here is the prince. The king of Saudi Arabia was in New York at the time, so the prince was our host, and we were host of the king, and the Saudi-American, I'm sorry, the Saudi-American king paid for all of our expenses, airfare, lodging, and so on. Upon our second day of arrival, we had an opportunity to meet with the US Ambassador, James Smith, who was very, very helpful to us in understanding the culture and how we would have to interact with the government officials and community members that we met there. Just to tell you a little bit about Saudi... Just to tell you a little bit about Saudi Arabia, it's about one-fifth the size of the United States, has a population of about twenty-eight million, is primarily desert with a rugged mountain terrain, and has extreme temperatures in the interior and humidity and temperature on the coast. So we were able to go on the coast, see the Red Sea, and that temperature was more like Orlando. Thought I was going to faint. But when we were in the capital city, it was more like Arizona, sort of a dry heat. We had an opportunity to meet with the Minister of Education and exchange some ideas. He was a little surprised that I was a woman and in charge of the school district, so we had some conversation about that, but had an opportunity to really get a bird's-eye view of their educational system. They have two systems that coexist there, a public system and a private system, but both are supported by the government. They begin with pre-primary education, which is their version of kindergarten for ages three to five, but this is not a prereq for going to first grade. School actually starts at age six. All national primary schools are day schools, and they are not coeducational, so the boys and girls are educated separately. However, they do have discussions underway to allow female teachers to instruct both boys and girls in grades one through three. Now, their students must pass an examination at the end of grade six, this is their primary school part of their education, to obtain an elementary education certificate. They cannot go on to the middle school year without that certificate. Their intermediate or middle school education is three years past the elementary certificate, and their secondary education phase is three years past the intermediate stage. Now, the three years that they do as a secondary portion is considered their final stage of general education. At the completion of their general education, students have three options. They can consider what they call special secondary education, which is Technical Secondary Institute, which provides technical and vocational education and three-year training programs in the fields of industry, commerce, and agriculture. They also have another option, which is to go to the universities. They have twenty-four government-supported universities in Saudi Arabia, offering diplomas, bachelor's, master's, and PhD degrees. They also have an option to study abroad, and currently Saudi Arabia has approximately a hundred and twenty thousand students attending colleges and universities worldwide, all supported by the government. Their room and board, as well as their education.
Should we do that?
Me too. Their private education system is under the auspices of the Department of the Ministry of Education. They supervise the private schools for boys and girls. The government provides free textbooks and annual financial aid to their private schools. And the government appoints improvised funds for a qualified director in all of their private schools. One of my burning questions was the education of women. We found that the education for girls and women was established in nineteen sixty, and they had their first group of women to graduate from a law program in two thousand eight. The women who graduated from the law program are not able to practice law in the country, but they can assist female clients. We had an opportunity to visit the EFAU University for Women, where they have the first engineering program in the country, and you can see the delegation taking a picture in front of the university. And, you know, it's a very, very modern Western country, and that was something that I was surprised about. You know, if you didn't see the Arabic writing, you wouldn't know that you weren't in Orlando or you weren't in Las Vegas, the way the buildings look, because many of their engineers were educated here in America. But an interesting note, while we were there, women received the right to vote and to run for office. And this is a picture with two of the women who are participating in government, and they were very, very excited about having this opportunity to run for office and to have the vote, but women are still not allowed to drive cars. So my next question was, how are you going to get to the voting place to vote? And they said, "Not a problem." This was nice, and they were sure that they were going to get there. I want to thank Mayor Lawrence for providing this opportunity for me. It was interesting to watch not only the business side, but the educational as well. I also brought artifacts to the nearest back for the board. Did you have any? Questions? You have questions? Oh, showing her. But it was, it was a very, very exciting experience. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Mike Wajinski and the team to come up and to give the board an update on our strategic plan.
Okay. Well, good evening, board members, and Superintendent, leadership staff, and public. It's, we're at year three of our five-year plan, it's strategic planning, and so we thought it would be a really good idea to do one of our periodic updates and talk about where we have been and what has happened, and share with you some data about where we have been and where we're going. And so, just to remind you, remind all of us, that these are our key result areas. There are five goals to the strategic plan. And as we think about where we've been and what it took to establish these, we had a retreat with a planning team in December of, helping with the year, two thousand eight. And our goals are, I just want to repeat these because these are the strategic goals for the district, that we enable students to successfully interact in a global environment through innovative use of state-of-the-art technology. We're going to talk a little bit about the progress we're making in that area. Second, to improve student achievement through innovative and effective instructional delivery. And that will be most of our discussion tonight, as we talk about what's happening in the area of instruction. If you're going to enable students to be successful, then you have to be innovative with instructional delivery. You have to be doing instruction differently than you've done in the past, and we're making great strides, and I want to emphasize that, that this is, I've worked with a lot of districts doing strategic planning, and this is a plan that's very focused on improving instruction. The research says over and over that if you want to improve student achievement, student learning, we have to continually work on improving instruction. And that's, that's been a real strong focus of this strategic plan through Linda's office, Linda Wood's office. We want to cultivate optimum learning experience in a positive environment, as engaged learning calls do. We know that when our students are engaged in learning, achievement improves and increases. We want to facilitate and strengthen partnerships, and you're going to hear some data tonight about how we're doing that, and how it also relates to technology. So as you can see, these goals are kind of interrelated. And of course, the last thing we want to talk about is how we accomplish the above goals in a fiscally responsible manner, which has been a major challenge for every school district, and we think in Michigan and around the country. Okay. Just to remind us, our first strategy was to use measurement tools to assess and evaluate all district functions. We're not completely through that, that particular strategy. We're still in motion on that. You're going to hear a little bit tonight about instructional change and some measurement tools, but this particular strategy is still not totally operational. Strategy two is that all courses will include inquiry-based problem-solving and project-based teaching methods. That particular strategy is not fully operational, but we want to focus a little bit on what we're doing in the area with instruction, because when we talk about understanding by design, which is another instructional innovation technique, and under strategy three, differentiated instruction, which will be the major part of our discussion here this evening. I won't read all of these specific things, but these are all things that have to be done to achieve the initiate, the initiative of differentiated instruction. And as you can see, there's a lot of training that goes on, there's building-wide awareness programs, we're expanding different things, and some of these things we decided are not necessarily going to happen. When you write a strategic plan, you take, you take a look at all the possibilities that exist, and generally speaking, it's, over a three-to-five-year period, not everything that is originally outlined will take place, and we'll update you on what that is about. But when we talk about understanding by design and differentiated instruction this evening, you'll see it's the focus of where we have been and where we're going. The fourth strategy, as you remember, is professional development. If you're going to undertake change in your classrooms, in your buildings, and the way you do things, there has to be training, and in particular, I want to emphasize that that area of adopting the district-wide PD framework is going to be a major part of our discussion this evening. Lastly, we talk about parent involvement, and what you're going to hear tonight is that parent involvement is changing, and it's changing because of technology that's available. And so we're going to share with you some data on that tonight that we think is encouraging, but still has a ways to go. Well, I'll just throw four kinds of pieces of information at you tonight, and just say that in the last year, we've seen a five percent decline in student enrollment, and as you know, X number of dollars per student is gone. The second area there really intrigued us. What we saw was a thirty percent movement of teachers around the district. Now, one of the things that happens when you have movement and mobility is that you want to make sure your educational program, your instructional program, has some degree of standardization within it, because as people are moving around, the stability factors that affect people when they move have great impact, and we're trying to minimize it as much as possible. Third area, I don't have to tell you, twenty-four million last year, over sixty million dollars in cuts over the last four years. Sixty-six, excuse me. I said over sixty, I was right. Close to seventy million dollars over the last few, four years is a major challenge. Now, what I want to say about that is, though, that there are a lot of organizations when faced with those kinds of resource cuts, really kind of sit back, worry about getting through the day-to-day. I'm working with about five districts right now in this area of strategic planning in a couple of different states, and one of the things I can tell you is that what really, I think, sets your plan in a different stride is that not only is it focused on continual improvement in classrooms, but no one's suggesting at all that this has not caused issues or problems, but people in this district have an attitude that we can sit and talk about this, but it's not going to do much good, so we're moving ahead. We're not going to stand still. We're a good school district, we'll probably become a great school district, even though this is happening to us, and there's been a great deal of disruption. I guess my final point about that is that there's been a lot of change that's occurred in the three years since we wrote this strategic plan, and we're going to have some recommendations for you at the end that I think will help, I meant, put things in focus. The last thing, and Howard's going to talk about this a little bit, is that our parent connect contacts are up tremendously over the past year. These are year-to-year comparisons, so we're using last year as a benchmark, and I think that he has some more details about how that looks. So, there we go.
Thank you, Mike, Board of Education Superintendent, members of the community. One of our strategies is to engage parents through effective communication. We use traditional methods like parent-teacher conferences, telephone calls from principals and teachers, notes from the classroom, but technology offers us so many more tools. We have the school district website, the cable access channels, we can use our Honeywell Instant Alert system to broadcast a telephone message to all of our parents within just a few minutes. Parent Connect is another tool that we have. Parent Connect allows parents to log into a website and see grades and attendance and other information about their student. And we've got some statistics here to show usage from last year and this year, and you can see that our usage is up seventy-two percent over last year, and that's very encouraging. In fact, it's up quite a bit at the K8 level. Another tool that we have is called Student Connect. Student Connect allows students to log into that same website and see their own grades and attendance and other information. Student Connect usage is double what it was last year, and at the middle school level, it's up four times. Our middle school students are using it four times as much as they did last year. One of the questions we had was, at what grade level do students suddenly become interested in their grade to take an interest to see how they're doing? And what you can see here is very encouraging, it's at the seventh grade level. We expected it to be maybe at the ninth or tenth grade level, that, oh my goodness, moment where, okay, this GPA is going to last good me out through high school, but our seventh graders are interested in the progress, and that's very encouraging, and you can see how it goes up from there. Our statistics show that, on average, our high school students are using this tool twice a week. Twice a week, they're checking their grades and attendance, and that's very encouraging. I'd like to introduce Alma Dean, PD facilitator, who will continue our presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the Superintendent, the board, and the community. I'm excited to share this information with you. It's really inspirational. We started off with a question. As we go back and we look at professional development, and we knew that we need to, we needed to help move our teachers forward with that, so we began with a question that's in the corner in the thought bubble. What are the professional development needs of teachers? And as we approached that question, we weren't really thinking in the terms of content, but what do we need for teachers that will help support them and move them forward through the process of implementing differentiated instruction into their classrooms? So we identified five areas that were really strong in helping moving them forward. The first, at the top of the circle, is the contextual aspect. And what that simply means is the professional development that we had this year and last year for our teachers were building-based and classroom-based. That's very significant. So we, as PD facilitators, came to our teachers' buildings, the various buildings in the district, and we held our professional development sessions right there in their facility, which gave them a little bit more of a comfortable atmosphere, and they were a little bit more open with us with that. We also identified the need for collaboration, and what happened with that aspect of it, the teachers would meet in grade-level groups or content area groups, small groups, which were about maybe three, four teachers at a time, and that allowed them to feel a little bit more comfortable opening up and speaking in regards to what was actually going on in their classrooms. That also allowed teachers an opportunity to speak about things that were more relevant to what they were experiencing. The third element we identified was the authenticity of it. Although this year, and last year as well, I'm serving in the capacity of a PD facilitator, at my very core, I'm still a classroom teacher. And so that was something that we felt the teachers really appreciated, teachers supporting other teachers. And the fourth element was reflection. It was a very reflective process, it still is. So teachers really asked themselves, how does this relate to my classroom and my students? Each element that we presented to them through the professional development, they were able to reflect on it and how it affected them personally. And the last of the five areas was, it was sustained. This wasn't something that happened once during the course of the year, it was ongoing. We were in their buildings regularly, holding PD sessions as a group, and even doing individual sessions with teachers, where we would come into their classrooms and demonstrate how to teach a particular lesson, or how to implement things like flexible groups or routines. And it happened throughout the school year. We also had summer sessions that were very successful. And as you can see, in the center of all of this is teacher belief, because the truth of the matter is, you can have all of the professional development you want, but if you don't, at the core of who you are, have a strong belief about what you're doing and who you're teaching, and their ability to be successful, it really doesn't amount to much. So that's, I think, one of the largest things that came out of it. We were able to see teachers move in the direction toward having a positive belief about what they were doing. Now, you also see in the arrow that's going through there, and it was mentioned earlier, there was a great deal of teacher movement over the last few years. So you have primary teachers, teachers from elementary, middle school, now teaching in high school, and vice versa, you have high school teachers teaching in elementary. You also have teachers who are out of their You also have teachers who are out of their comfort areas as far as their content is concerned. There's teachers who formally taught science, maybe teaching social studies and things like that. And although they're certified for those areas, it may have been a while since they taught in that particular area. So that was another opportunity to support the teachers. And that's really what this whole professional development model is about, supporting teachers and helping them to grow. And most of the time, when you see things like that with the teacher movement, it is, as was mentioned earlier, comfortable, a season for change, and teachers are, you know, some are having a difficult time with it. But I am excited because I have seen middle school math teachers teaching kindergarten and really going at it full throttle. We also have a high school counselor who's now teaching first grade and doing a phenomenal job. So there's always, in my opinion, a silver lining to everything, and teachers are supporting each other. And another great thing that I've seen develop out of this is that quite often, it would be a concentrated group of really strong educators, maybe a fourth-grade team in a building that had four teachers that were all really strong. Well, some of those teachers are now in different places. So we see an element of capacity building, where they're taking that strong tenet that they have and moving to another building and developing that same, a new team that's just as strong in a new place. So it's a positive that has developed out of something that could have potentially not been so positive. Does anyone have any questions? I'm really excited about this, and I apologize if I miss anything, but I know we have to be brief. I could go on.
We have a teacher survey that's underway as well.
We do. We do have a teacher survey that's underway right now. Part of the reason we know that this is working, we received a lot of feedback from teachers. In the beginning of this process, a lot of teachers were apprehensive about letting us into their classroom and speaking to them about things. Now we get emails, phone calls, they are inviting us in and inviting each other in. So it's a whole different mentality. But again, it goes back to the center of it, the beliefs are changing. Does anyone have any questions? I know you do. No questions? Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm Teri John, the principal at Vandenberg World Cultures Academy. And the part that I want to talk about is, okay, so the strategic plan sets the target over a five-year period. And then there's all this professional development, which was strategy four relating to strategies two and three, which were good instruction. So the teachers are getting lots of support. How does it come to life in a building? When the PD facilitators leave and the summer sessions are over? So it's really about good teaching. And at the top, I have, "The district's strategic implementation of differentiated instruction includes training and support over time, monitoring for results." So some of those supports have been cadres one, two, and three, which were small teams from each building in cadre one, and then different teams from each building in two, and different teams in cadre three, who were trained over the course of a year, multiple opportunities to learn about differentiated instruction. Summer classes, and Alma referred to that. Out of the cadres came demonstration teachers. Every building had at least one, some buildings had two. They received extra training, extra support, and extra technology to really ramp up their practice in this quest to build the capacity district-wide. On top of that, lots of leadership training, not only for teachers to become teacher leaders, but for principals to become instructional leaders. Lots of work around reflective practitioners and reflective practice. I wouldn't want to go to a doctor who, after a surgery, didn't say, what could I have done better? What went well? What do I need to know for the next surgery that's like that, that I don't know yet? And it's taking that model. I wouldn't want to go to an accountant. I wouldn't want to go to any professional who wasn't a reflective practitioner. So it's putting in place lots of things at the district's level, including take one in the National Board certification process, to ramp up teachers' abilities to be reflective practitioners and truthfully principals' abilities to be reflective practitioners as well. As well as Saturday sessions, summer weren't enough, so we threw in a bunch of Saturday sessions for people to learn more and get supported more. And then this year, a standardized lesson plan template with all the components of differentiated instruction and in terms of building the capacity so that our schools are more like each other than not like each other, and our classrooms are more like each other than not. If we're all planning using the same template and considering the same components when we're designing instructions, the outcome has got to be better for children. So then, in the bottom blue bar, the way I see this in my head, the district has the target, and that's in the middle, the star, five pillars of differentiated instruction. And if you look around the circles, the five tenants in the classroom are flexible groups of students. There is some whole group instruction going on in classrooms, but it's a very small amount of the time. And then the classroom environment that is safe and respectful and responsive to students, and where students feel comfortable being learners, taking risks, where students are comfortable helping each other, where students are comfortable saying, I don't understand this yet. Or, you know what, I got it. I understand it now. Give me something else. And the teacher says, okay, I'm going to give you something else, instead of, nope, something else comes Friday. If that student is ready for something else on Tuesday, that student deserves something else on Tuesday. High-quality curriculum and lots of work throughout the district around KUDs. Those are statements. The K is know, the U is understand, and the D is do. What will students know? The understanding is, why do they need to know it? What will they understand? What's the really big idea in the knowing? And what will they do to prove they understand it? And teachers have been working on KUDs for several years now. Respectful task, and that kind of goes back to classroom environment and high-quality Students come in knowing all kinds of different things. And they don't all need to learn the same things because some of them come in knowing some of those things. So it's incumbent upon teachers to figure out what kids know and understand, and what they need to know and understand, and then differentiate accordingly. An ongoing assessment is really important, so that we're pre-assessing to make sure we know what they know. As they're working, we're forming opinions through their work about what they are learning and understanding, and then at the end, modifying what we're doing as teachers in response to what students are telling us along the journey. And then the summative assessment at the end, where we, the task or the project or whatever the ultimate assignment is. So, in order to make that happen in the classroom, in conjunction with what Alma already told you was happening in PD, and the green arrows up there for what the district is providing in the way of support, it's important that at the building level, they're getting support when the PD facilitators aren't there. So I'm going to tell you what are some of the things that are going on at Vandenberg. And there are things just like it and others going on in every building in the district. Faculty meetings, we all have them. And they're not FYI kind of meetings anymore. The FYI stuff goes out in an email. The faculty meeting, precious time when you have everybody together to do professional development experiences. Grade-level team meetings. Once a week, I meet with my grade-level team. And we're always talking about one or more of those pink bubbles you see around the circle. Peer observations. My teachers are going into my demonstration teacher's classroom, having facilitated conferences with her as a group before the observation, looking at her lesson plan, then actually watching her teach, and it's videotaped while she's teaching it, and then a facilitated post-observation conference where her brain is picked, she's encouraged to be reflective, observers' questions are getting answered, and there's always the video for backup if there are questions. I'm not so good with this clicker. One of the things that I think is really important when we ask, oh, there we go, I pressed it a bunch of times and they're coming up all at once now. It's really important for me, as when I'm a learner, to have models. So I want my teachers to ramp up their ability to differentiate. It's important to me that I model for them. So my teachers don't get typical staff meeting agendas anymore. They get a KUD agenda. My agenda tells them what they're going to know, why they need to know it, and what they're going to do to prove they understand it. So, and I try to use the strategies that I would want them to use in the classroom, and then we debrief the process. So this is yet another way for them to see how differentiation works. In my grade-level team meetings, the agendas aren't the same for every grade level because the grade levels aren't all in the same place. So those conversations are differentiated. I collect KUD statements, one per grade level, which forces the grade-level conversation for each core content each week, and also an individual teacher's lesson plan for the week related to those commonly developed grade-level KUDs. Do you think that's it? Oh, no. Okay, thank you. I'm giving them clicker challenge tonight. Sorry, I apologize. The facilitated debriefs are really important, and we debrief after staff meetings, we debrief after grade-level team meetings, and obviously, we debrief after observations. That forces the reflection and brings to the surface the questions, makes people hopefully comfortable being vulnerable and publicly willing to take a risk. I mean, I plan my agendas, I write my KUDs, and at the end, we talk about, so how did it go? And I'm telling you, it doesn't always go the way I designed it. The same way when teachers do it, it doesn't always go the way they designed it. And we talk about, okay, what do I need to monitor for? What do I need to adjust for? What do we need to revisit? Who needs to revisit it? What would be more meaningful? And those are the very same things that we all want teachers to do. And as we move toward that target, so that the five pillars of differentiated instruction are alive and well in each classroom, the quality of instruction will be consistent classroom to classroom, grade level to grade level, and building to building. And now I'm turning it over to... Say that again?
One more.
Oh, it's... My chair, this leader, I apologize.
Oh, that's perfectly...
Linda Wood, whose knee isn't cooperating. So she's going to give her part of the presentation from that comfy chair over there.
And I thank you all for what you've been sharing thus far. And I just wanted to share with the board very briefly is that I've been on this journey with the strategic planning process with Mike and with many members around in this room as a superintendent. And I can, you know how you can sit and you can visually remember moments when we sat in this room and we sat in various rooms talking about the need that we have to meet all of the needs of our students in our district. And in order to do that in a better way, we have to find a more meaningful way of how we deliver that change of learning for our staff in a more meaningful way. And I'm very pleased with what has been unfolding in our district as it relates to our strategic planning vision several years ago. But I also wanted to say something that Mike indicated earlier, is that in the process of implementing, you start to gain new ideas, and you start to see new areas that can partake or that we can partake in. And one of them that I'd like to highlight right here is what happened in our district as it related to this whole piece of moving from differentiated instruction, which is getting at, how do we meet the needs of all of our kids? And how do we help teachers provide a better understanding of how to meet this increasing diversity and increasing diversity of needs? And also knowing that there is a continual increase in the expectations of educators these days. We've always had it, but we haven't had to demonstrate it with all of the achievement tests, et cetera. So it was very a committed interest of mine and those around the table, how do we best support our teachers? And one of the things that Alma Dean indicated and highlighted is that so much around what happens in the classroom is related to what teachers believe, and those beliefs needed to be voiced and needed to be discussed. And so one of the things that has unfolded is the fusion of incorporating the principles of National Board certification with differentiated instruction as two very, very important models. And they both incorporate what we have learned and implemented in the district around UBD. Our whole curriculum is based on that. And what I want to share with you very quickly, because it is now 10 after 8, and I wrote that on my paper, that we will be finished at 10 after 8. But one of the things that I just really wanted to highlight is that when we have our teachers in the process trying to meet the needs, learn the strategies, and to have an opportunity to reflect on their beliefs, it takes time. And the other aspect of that is that it takes a lot of reflection. And one of the very important components of National Board is that teachers have to start looking at their practice themselves. So you probably have heard of many of our teachers beginning to videotape themselves and starting to look and reflect at what they're doing in the classroom as they look at themselves, as they analyze their practice, to describe their practice and reflect on their practice. And they're reflecting based upon the elements of DI, which Teri mentioned, but they're also reflecting on the various propositions that are part of National Board, such as, how committed am I to the students and to their learning? These are deep questions that we have to all reflect on as we're thinking about the teaching and the engagement that we're in process of implementing. Helping teachers to really know deeply their subjects and how to teach those subjects, there's something that's very important. You can know your content, but it's critically important that you know how to deliver that content in a deep way. Because the test, the assessments, the achievement that is expected, the rigor at all levels is not just surface, it's deep learning and deep teaching. How do you manage and monitor learning? That's another core proposition. What that means is we're not managing and monitoring behavior, we're managing and monitoring learning. And when we can manage and monitor the learning, many of the other factors will dissipate. And so that's very important that we help support our teachers with that. And we've already talked about the deep process, and we've talked about that our teachers need to be in learning communities, which we've echoed and resonated already as to what others have said. And this has been done with a very strong focus on generating teacher leadership, not just in the form of PD facilitators, but leaders at all levels in our buildings, along with helping our principals to develop their leadership. And I could speak a lot more and bring a lot more connections out, but I don't want to prolong because I know we have a lot still yet to discuss in our agenda for this evening. But Mike, would you like to move forward the next steps, or did you...
Well, I think that, first of all, I want to thank our team.
Absolutely.
This is our team that we work with time to time. One of the advantages that I have is, and it's kind of like when you don't see children for a while, like, I have three kids, and one lives in New York, one lives in Denver, and one lives in Los Angeles. And when you don't see the kids for a while, you, oh, my goodness, how they've grown or how they've changed. In my experience with the Southfield Public Schools is that, you know, I show up every few months, and I always ask the Dr. Phil question, which is, you know, how's that working for you? You know, that whole thing? How are things going? And I'm kind of the guy that holds everybody's speechifier and say, well, what data do you have? What are you been doing? Show me, because we're going to have a presentation in the board, as we have tonight. Show me, because we're gonna have a presentation in the board, as we have tonight. But now we know that there are some next steps, and I'm gonna start to bottom there and just suggest to you that we may want to look at sometime this spring, doing some updating of the whole plan. Your next accreditation visit for the district accreditation will be a year from this spring. And so it may be appropriate to take a look at the current plan and maybe do some significant updating. But I will say this, that there have been significant changes in this district in the last three years. I think much of it is due to the fact that there is a blueprint that the community, the board adopted, is a blueprint, and it is working, and the changes are beginning to occur. What I'm after, and I keep saying this to the team, is show me the data. I'd like to see some data. And we're getting closer and closer to that. So if you want to just run through these last few bullets, I want to thank the team and everyone for our time tonight.
Absolutely. Absolutely. In terms of the last bullet, developing measurement tools in non-instructional areas actually is developing measurement tools in support of all areas, instructional and non-instructional. And we'll be growing in those areas to support and provide that information. But another very important piece is expanding our communication and our support for our parents. That is a major goal that will unfold as we continually move forward. Another very important piece is examining our grading and assessment procedures and processes in the district, helping everyone understand what grading really means and how it's related to learning, and how are we measuring all of that. And then this whole continued conversation as we continue to move forward the quest of teaching for deep understanding. We don't want our children just to memorize and then be able to regurgitate and later forget, but to have deep understanding and later application so that it's meaningful for their lives and long-lasting livelihood. So at this moment, I thank you again.
We have a lot more work to do.
We have a tremendous amount of work to do. I'm excited about the work and excited about the team. Thank you so much for being on here this evening.
And thank you.
And thank you, team, for your support. Are there any questions from the board? And we'll move on to my cabinet, your report, and next will be our question finding.
Good evening. Tonight we have Diane Love and Nathan Carter from the auditing firm, Plant Moran. They're here to report on our financial audit for the year ending June 30th of 2011.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We view this as the closing of our audit process, which is our report to the board that hired us. In your board's packets, we provided you with four pieces of information. One is your general purpose financial statement. Two, the federal single audit. Three, there's a letter to the board. And then we have a visual presentation, which is up here, that we're gonna go through in a minute. So first of all, I want to make a few comments on the audit process. The audit process involves over 400 hours of testing controls, testing balances, reviewing, supporting documentation, confirming with outside parties, discussions with district personnel, and testing for compliance with certain laws and regulations. Virtually all our work is performed at the district's offices and starts prior to the end of the fiscal year. In order for us to issue an opinion, we have a very strict standard and policy that we must adhere to. Plant Moran's reputation and license are on the line when we sign an opinion. The objective of a financial audit is for the independent auditors to issue an opinion on amounts and disclosures in the district's financial statements. Overall, we found the district's books and records to be in very good condition. I'm also happy to report that based on the tests and procedures that we perform, we've rendered an unqualified or clean opinion on the district's financial statements. This is the highest level of assurance that we as auditors can provide on financial statements. These financial statements will be submitted for evaluation by the Association of School Business Officials for over 20 consecutive years, and it might actually be 30 now. It's close, got us close to 30, but Kent's either the story, you know. Southfield Public Schools has been awarded the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Association of Business Officials. And in order to achieve this award, your reports have to meet an even more extensive level of standards. This is a significant achievement, and we commend the district for its efforts in reporting accurate and meaningful financial information. Southfield Schools is the longest-standing recipient of this award in the state of Michigan. The next item we have in your packet is the federal single audit, and this is the audit of the district's compliance with laws and regulations relating to the federal program. It's an important audit because the district receives over $10 million in federal revenue. This report is filed with the state, federal government, and various other agencies. We did have one finding this year, but no question costs, and the process that resulted in the finding has been corrected. But your packet also contains a letter to the board, and it contains some, there's also a letter to the board that states that it contains some additional details on the audit, and also some information on school finance. There's nothing tonight that is in that letter that I feel needs to be brought to the board's Before we get on to some of the key numbers in the financial statements, I have a few general financial comments. So in the year ended June 30th, 2011, the district had excess revenues, and the general fund balance increased to approximately $18 million. In order to get that fund balance, you had to make some very tough decisions. And I remind you that the fund balance is at a specific point in time, which in this case was June 30th, 2011. The district's current projections indicate that $9 million of the fund balance will be used up in this school year and another $15 million in the next school year. I commend the board and the administration for making the tough structural changes that you made. Otherwise, it'd be very likely that you would be very close to a deficit at this point. All the information that's out there now does not lead to any near-term positive changes on the revenue side. Property values continue to decline, enrollment and population continues to decrease, state foundational allowances may cut dramatically, and federal stimulus funds have been used up. On the expense side, healthcare costs continue to rise, and the retirement rate is now over 24%. The board and the administration have no control over the items I just discussed. So as hard as decisions have been over the last year, I think you should continue to make the tough decisions on the things that you can control. With that, I'm gonna hand it over to my associate Nate, who's going to discuss some of the details of the financial audit.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First slide shows the variance balance sheets of the district as of June 30th, 2011. The district has many different funds based on the purpose of those funds, but the general fund houses the primary activities of the district. Assets for the general fund totaled approximately $32 million. Included in that balance was cash investments of $20.6 million, as well as the state aid receivable of $6.6 million. Liabilities totaled $13.7 million. Included in that balance was $3 million of accounts payable, as well as $6.3 million of accrued payroll that was earned prior to June 30th and was paid subsequently. Fund equity included a non-spendable balance of $558,000, which included inventories of $33,000 and prepaid expenditures of $425,000. Other majors were assigned, which included accumulated severance obligation to employees of $5.1 million, a final ERI payment of $1 million, which was paid in July 2011, anticipated tax appeals that were paid in 2012 of $5 million, approximately $3.8 million was paid during the past fiscal year. And lastly, $6.5 million, which relates to the 10% minimum fund balance policy adopted by the board. It wasn't enough to allocate a full 10%, but we did allocate for a major. That arrives you at the ending fund balance of $18.2 million. The next slide shows the combined segments of revenue, expenditures, and change in fund balance for the year. General fund revenues came in at $111.7 million. Expenditures were $97.5 million. Other financing sources totaled $16,000, or a net change in fund balance of $14.2 million. When factored into the beginning, fund balance of $3.9 million, arrived again at the $18.2 ending fund balance. This next slide shows the revenue for both the general and funded projects funds for the year, and shows where the money came from. Total revenue was $120.7 million, and you can see the biggest piece that pie was the state foundation allowance for $92 million. And that really illustrates the district has very little control of the majority of their revenue, as this is determined by the equation, the blended people count times your per people allowance every year. The next slide shows the total expenditures for the general and funded projects funds, which came in at $106.4 million. The largest item there was salary and benefits at 75% or $79.4 million. And with the district being a service industry, your largest cost, there are going to be people costs, and going forward, that's going to include your escalating healthcare costs, as well as escalating retirement costs. This next slide shows comparison of fund balance as a percentage of expenditures for the last five years. You can see that 2011 was the first year that there was an increase to fund balance. The current year percentage of 18.7% can be derived by taking the fund balance of $18.2 million, dividing by your expenditures of $97.5 million. This is above the last published state average of 10.4%. But I will mention, as Diane also mentioned, that there are many hurdles to come in the future, including the budgeted $9 million of expenditures over revenue for 2012, along with the estimated $15 million of expenditures over revenue for 2013. My last slide quantifies the declining enrollment of the district. You can see from 2007 to 2011, there's been a decrease of 1,267 students. Put into the $2,011 as far as the foundation allowance, that equates to $14 million of lost revenue. And the $14 million exhibits that this is a very impactful thing for the district, and this will continue to be an issue for the foreseeable future. Thank you.
Any questions to the board?
I have a question about all these slides. I think it was like two that. There was an aggregate in, I couldn't quite see what it said, but it said, "Day 33?"
Okay.
21, I want to get the fund line. Southfield Schools is the...
So what that is, is the fund balance of represents approximately 33 days of operations on a 180-day school year. So if you had no more revenue at any point, you'd only be out of money 33 days, 33 school days. Any other questions? Kind of some more? Okay. I just want to thank Debbie Trump and Cherie Barker for the good job they did in getting right through the audit and their staff. And as I always do, Southfield is Plant Moran hometown district, our world headquarters down the street. And happy to be here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
You. At this time, I'd like to invite Debbie Trump up to the podium. I'd also like to request that the board president go to the podium for a special presentation.
The podium comes up. Real quickly, can Joanne Swansky and Cherie Barker please? Joanne Swansky and Cherie Barker, please stand up real quickly. I want to recognize them for all of the hard work and many, many hours that they put into it compiling the budget and working with the auditors. They've done an awesome job. Hey, as you heard from our auditors, we were recognized recently from the Association of School Business Officials International for receiving the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Accounting for the longest time in the state of Michigan. We're one of only two in the state of Michigan that have received it for over 25 years. We're currently at 28 years. So at this time, I would like to present this plaque to President Buchanan, showing all of the 28 years that we have received.
This is very significant in that, you know, in these very trying financial times, that we're still able to, year in, year out, you know, meet all of the changes and challenges that are taking place in public education, and still be able to maintain good records. And, you know, these are the things that keep this district solvent. And when you keep a district solvent, you're really keeping home values and things of that nature, keeping the community sound. So it's very important that we maintain this level of proficiency, and I'm very proud of all the hard work that you and your staff do, and just want to thank you all. Thank you.
Continuing with the report of the superintendent.
Good evening. My report is relatively brief this evening in comparison to my counterparts. Most of my agenda is contained in Item 6A, which is the consent agenda, but I did want to bring a brief bargaining up at the table with our U.S. Secretary, and hopefully we can conclude this. We have a few remaining issues to be negotiated. We also have began our negotiations with F. Nusso, which represents our prayer professionals and other organized members. We have a session on Monday, we'll have another session on Wednesday, and I'll bring additional updates from that point forward. Thank you.
And now we have Vice President, Vice President, who's part of the CAFs, who's a head start for us.
I would like to comment that tonight, Ms. Alana Smith will give the head start for us. She attended the meeting this morning. And in the future, she will be the liaison to the head start program, and I will be the firegum. And Ms. Smith is very happy to accept this charge. It is involved going to meetings, everyone, and reporting on what happened. Sometimes more frequent. Oh, the president of, where is he? Mr. Gator. Hi, I did see you come in. This is the president of the policy council, Mr. Sabian Gator. Thank you for the opportunity. Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Vice President Caff, for that warm and auspicious welcome to the meeting with the Betsy Head Start Policy Council. The meeting was held today, Tuesday, November 8th, 2011, at 9:30 a.m. Chairperson Sabian Gator called the meeting to order. Ms. Janice Hill, site director, gave the following narrative report. Betsy Head Start is fully enrolled to date, 38 drops, and 118 people are on the waiting list. The average daily attendance is at 79% due to possible transportation dilemmas with parents who work and are not able to transport their child home. with parents who work and are not able to transport their child home or to school in the middle of the day. Eighty-five is the preferred attendance rate, and Miss Hill will work to increase our numbers. Head Start Awareness Day was a tremendous success, and parents, teachers, and administrators at BUSTY are to commend for that. I do notice the beautiful trifle presentation they showed us today. Army Care participated in this event, bringing Dr. Bear. Spiderman came to the event. Congressman Hanson Clark had representatives in attendance. There were make and take opportunities, as well as a parade, space painting, and many other activities for students and parents. The Child Adult Food Care Program, or CAFC, provided one thousand eight hundred and seven breakfast meals, over two thousand lunches, and two thousand snacks to families. Bus Safety Week was a success. Students learned bus etiquette, safe passenger rules, and more. Interestingly, now, BUSTY's Head Start transportation numbers are up to thirty-three children. Donuts for Dads is still scheduled, and Fire Safety will be their theme. November sixteenth, volunteer training. November twenty-first, asthma training. A representative will discuss asthma triggers, what to do in the event of attacks, and helpful information for parents with children who have asthma. Additionally, on that day, the kids will be celebrating grandparents. That's November twenty-first. November twenty-second, Native American Day, and students will learn about Native Americans, how they draft, how important they are to our land, et cetera. Forgotten Harvest will start as soon as they obtain more trust. Some problems are ongoing with their current fleet. Regional Conference occurred, and Miss Hill informed that Head Start has rigorous family engagement mandates. BUSTY will work hard to engage families. Ms. Shereen Barker gave the budget report. Financial representatives for the grant reported that twenty-five percent of the grant has been used mostly on training, salaries, and benefits. The total budget is one million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. To date, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars remain. There was eleven thousand dollars less available to the grant for Great Start. However, we are able to still pick up the shortfall. The next policy council meeting will be November twenty-ninth, 2011, at nine thirty a.m. And Dr. Cook, I was wondering if I might take sixty-two seconds and have Chairperson Gator just briefly mention about the regional conference event.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to say that going to the conference was, it was a treasure trove of information that we would bring back to the BUSTY Head Start. Also, down there, Southfield, we received regional recognition, and also, you know, as a representative going down from Southfield, we were able, you know, we turned some heads, and we got a lot of people, gave Southfield some exposure, and I was rewarded, was that the right? Yeah, I was rewarded, you know, is, what was that?
Pie, a pie plate and cover.
A pie plate and cover, because I enjoy making pie. And also because when I went down, I took the time to help out with the conference, and we were Southfield recognized, and they mentioned our program, and the Ohio delegation also, again, was recognizing Southfield BUSTY Head Start. Also, along with just a picture that they showed to the, all the other delegates that were there. I just want to say, Ms. Robinson, thank you so much for the wisdom of calling that and making it happen, and everyone knows, I think, our wonderful team here at BUSTY, I mean, we're making this flash, and it's been a lot of good things, and I just want to appreciate everyone, or the government board for working with us, and just take this under your wing. I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Gator. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cook Robinson.
Mr. President, I also like to add that the policy council had training last month, technical assistance on their role and how to run meetings, and they have also offered to train the board. They would like for us to come and attend training at the governing board to better understand our role in supporting the policy council. So Ms. Christian will be sending out an email asking for dates when we are all available for that training.
Next, moving to unfinished business, and we, at this point, wanted to put into the record both your evaluation survey for Superintendent Dr. Watson Robinson. Before we start, I like to mention, this binder represents all of the activity of our superintendent over the past year. As you can see, she's very detailed in her record keeping, but this is also significant in demonstrating to the, to the board and to the community exactly how much work goes into growing Southfield Public Schools. So with that, I'd like to have the secretary to read the evaluation for the record.
Superintendent's evaluation. Concentrated in five basic areas: leadership, accountability, alignment, community-school relationship, board superintendent relationship. In the area of leadership, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson is a proven leader who leads from the front by example. Leadership has been described as "the process of social influence in which one person can enlist the aid and support of others in the accomplishment of a common task." This has been demonstrated in all areas of her job performance, i.e. community partnership, educational relationships, professional development, et cetera. Dr. Cook Robinson has demonstrated outstanding leadership qualities by advocating on behalf of Southfield Public Schools on a city, county, and state level, as well as out of the country on a global basis. She holds her team of administrators accountable for the academic development of our students. Dr. Cook Robinson creates a work environment that promotes leadership, professionalism, personal responsibility, collaboration, and enthusiasm for the mission of the schools. Under the area of accountability, accountability is often used synonymously with such concepts as responsibility, answerable ability, blameworthiness, liability, and other terms associated with the expectations of account giving. Dr. Cook Robinson has demonstrated that ultimately she is the one for everything, but gives credit where credit is due, one responsible for everything, but gives credit where credit is due. On a number of occasions, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson has given recognition to those that have performed outstandingly under her leadership. These accomplishments have been achieved in the face of a never-changing economic climate, but somehow and by some way, she has been able to get done what was required. The board has kept abreast of recommended resource allocation throughout the calendar year. Dr. Cook Robinson takes responsibility and formulates appropriate plans of action. In the area of alignment, Dr. Cook Robinson has aligned the needed resources and services necessary to support the vision and goals of a Southfield Public School. She has done this in a manner that has allowed for the achievement of all students. Dr. Cook Robinson has done an outstanding job of making sure that district curriculum and standards are aligned for state and federal standards, and adjusted as necessary. Staff development concentrates on different instructions. Help me out there, Lynn. To meet the different needs of students. Our schools are now equipped to serve all students. Under the area of community-school relationship, Dr. Cook Robinson benefits from a community-school relationship that is superb. She is very visible in the community and is present at a variety of events throughout the entire year. The community seems to be in sync with the superintendent. She responds to all community mail and requests in a very timely and fair manner. She has been involved in the community as evidenced by many community organizations that she holds leadership positions in, i.e. field goal in the Southfield Foundation, such as name a couple. She works well with state and local governmental officials and staff, as well as other community groups and organizations. She is totally immersed in the community and working very hard to involve and keep the community informed. She is focused on telling our story. Board-superintendent relationship. Dr. Cook Robinson communicates with the board effectively and maintains a collegial and professional relationship with all members of the board. She does an outstanding job of informing the board about the Florida matters of the district. She makes it a point to keep the entire board informed of what is going on in the district and all matters that relate to Southfield Public Schools. She keeps the board informed and is very proactive in keeping the board ahead of the concerns and problems. Additional comments? Dr. Cook Robinson, we look forward to future success under your leadership and the support of your administrative team for the Southfield Public Schools.
I want to thank the board for that evaluation, and I want to share with you that it is an honor and a pleasure to serve with this team. You make it easy in a very, very difficult environment. You are a supportive board, you're an understanding board, but you're a little bit tough sometimes. But I want to thank you for that evaluation.
Well deserved. Well deserved, Dr. Cook Robinson. Okay, let's get to business. I want to ask for a motion to open and approve the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I would like to open the consent agenda.
Removed and supported. Are there any questions? And now, Mr. Secretary, please call for the vote. Madam Vice President?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
myself, yes. Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes, yes. Thank you. We take a motion to open and approve Report Fifty-22, the award of the Adler Boiler bid.
Chair, I move that we open Report Fifty-22.
Removed and supported. Ms. Trapp, could you give us a background?
I'm going to have Dennis Gregory come up and...
Okay.
Good evening.
Madam Superintendent, members of the board, cabinet, and people in the community. Adler Elementary School, recently, we put out a bids, or we accepted bids for an RFP that we had put out to put an exoriorary or supplemental boiler in Adler. Adler has a boiler that is one of the oldest that we have in the district. Parts are getting a little tough to get for it at this point, and so if that boiler were to go down for any period of time, we would have a major problem in continuing education in that building. So we put an RFP out for bids. The bids were accepted by eight different companies. Integrated Design Systems, the company is a company that reviewed the bids and did a background check on these companies, did the proposals. They proposed that we pick Tech Mechanical Systems, PONAC, for the winning bid of one hundred and four thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. I might also add that we are going to be getting a credit or a stipend from Consumers Power for three thousand dollars for this particular project.
Is that some type of incentive from them, or a rebate?
Yes, it's an incentive.
What are some of our criteria when selecting? I'm sure it's not just low price.
No. In this case, Tech Mechanical was a little bidder out of eight bidders. When they do the reference checks on them, when you look at similar jobs that they've done for other outfits or school districts, and make the recommendation based on comparing what the bid was as compared to our RFP, to make sure that what our RFP requested was included in that particular bid. This particular project is, if you do okay, is projected to happen during the Christmas break, so there won't be any interruption and any education in that facility. It will all be done while the students are...
Just one last question. My grandfather, I can hear him right now saying, is there a warranty?
Yes, there is. There is a warranty. I don't have that information right here with me, but...
We have some warranty.
Yes, I'll find out what you know. Any other questions?
Thank you. I give the secretary calling the vote. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Madam Vice President?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Mr. President? Yes. Take a motion to open and approve Report Fifty-Three, Resolution to Protect School Aid Fund Revenue by District of Southfield Public Schools. Whereas education is the cornerstone of a successful economic turnaround, and investment in education is the key to a new Michigan. And whereas the children of Michigan deserve educational opportunities that allow them to compete on a national and international basis. And whereas the long-term economic health of our state and opportunity for our citizens is conditioned on meaningful structural reform to provide stable and fair funding for education. And whereas the personal property tax repeal called for by SB Thirty-Four, that's the Senate Bill Thirty-Four, would amend the General Property Tax Act to exempt all personal property from the collection of taxes limited after December thirty-one, two thousand and eleven. And whereas Senate Bill Thirty-Four would reduce by over five hundred and fifty million dollars the available funding to schools statewide. And whereas Senate Bill Thirty-Four would increase the tax burden on homeowners because of the loss of personal property tax debt village. And whereas Senate Bill Thirty-Four would result in a loss of four million, thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars in collected utility personal property tax revenue, directly affecting all of Oakland County schools. And whereas Senate Bill Thirty-Four would result in a loss of approximately sixty dollars per pupil in PA eighteen distributions from Oakland Intermediate School District. And whereas Senate Bill Thirty-Four would result in a loss of one million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in collected personal property tax debt village revenue for the Southfield Public Schools. And whereas Senate Bill Thirty-Four would result in a loss of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars in collected personal property tax whole harvest village revenue for the Southfield Public Schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education for Southfield Public Schools expects the governor and legislature to fully replace the revenues lost through proposed cuts to the personal property tax or oppose Senate Bill Thirty-Four. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education for the Southfield Public Schools expects the governor and legislature to meet their constitutional responsibility to the children of this state and focus on the perennial and structural deficits that plague school finance in Michigan. And be it further resolved, the board directs its secretary to send copies of this resolution to the governor and the state legislative delegation representing this school district. And then I hereby certify that the foregoing... finance in Michigan. And be it further resolved, the Board directs its secretary to send copies of this resolution to the Governor and the state legislative delegation representing this school district. And then I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full, true, and correct copy of a resolution duly passed and adopted by the Board of Education for the Southfield Public Schools at a meeting thereof held on the eighth day of November, two thousand and eleven, by the following vote of the trustees thereof. Ayes and in favor thereof and nays are supposed to be counted and listed here and signed by our secretary. Thank you.
One of the facts we're doing here is we're sending or letting it be known to Legislature that we oppose Senate Bill Thirty Four and the very significant impact that, negative impact that it's going to have on this community as well as others across the state. And with that...
Yeah, it's... It may have been voted on committee already. Was it? The committee meeting was today.
Yes.
And the Board of Education met today too in Latin. So now it has to go to the Senate. If it's voted out of committee, it stands a chance of being passed. So the community should be aware that this really calls for community action if we don't want this bill to be passed out of the Senate. Thank you.
Thank you. In front of the House, this Secretary, call for the vote. Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yeah.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. President?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, now, I'll take a motion to open and approve Report Fifty Twenty Four, Resolution for Services Consolidation Play. Removed and supported. Uh, Mr. Trust, give us some background.
The purchase of state aid money that was held back was put into a pot for a best practices grant. So as part of the best practices, we have to enter into a formal consolidation plan with the Michigan Department of Ed. So what this resolution says is that we will continue with the certain consolidation plans that we have in the past and that we will look for further opportunities in the future for consolidation. So and then this is just part of what we need to do formally to apply for the best practices grants from the state.
Now, does this apply to neighboring school districts or other municipal?
This is just for school districts.
Okay.
Do you know how much it's going to be?
It's supposed to be approximately one hundred dollars per student, so for us it would be about seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
In front of the House, this Secretary, call for the vote. Myself, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yeah.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Madam Vice President?
Yes.
Ms. President?
Yes.
Thank you. Take a motion to open and approve Report Fifty Twenty Five, Resolution for Best Practices in the Senate. For moved and supported. Yes, Trustee?
This is the resolution for the actual best practices in the Senate. What this does is that we have set at least four of the five best practices that were set forth by the state. We're charging our employees at least ten percent of their healthcare premiums, saying that we will develop or have implemented a certain consolidation plan, which was the resolution we just passed, that we have obtained competitive bids on our non-instructional services, and also that we will provide a link on our homepage to the URL for the Michigan School Beta Portal, which contains required dashboard indicators which will have to do with student achievement and other issues like that. So we have to pass this resolution so that we can apply for three hundred dollars per student.
So this is in addition to the one hundred dollars for students, an additional three hundred?
No, this is the same money. This is the hundred dollars, but the first resolution was part of this. We had to enter into the consolidation plan with the state and then that consolidation plan is one of the four or five best practices.
Mister President, I'd just like to add that even after passing this resolution and Danny Lee's plan, it still is not people to be cut, so he was suing from Lansing last year. So they cut us, took all of that money, and now we're giving only a portion of it back.
Government matters, yeah. All right, uh, this Secretary, call for the vote. Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yeah.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Madam Vice President?
Yes.
Ms. President?
Yes.
Take a motion to open and approve Report Fifty Twenty Six, Recommendations for Student Discipline.
I will open Report Fifty Twenty Six. Support.
Moved and supported. Uh, this is necessary since we didn't have a forum of trustees and attendants to vote on, at the student hearing, so now I just come before the board. Uh, are there any questions? And now, Mr. Secretary, call for the vote. Myself, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yeah.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Madam Vice President?
Yes.
Ms. President?
Yes, yes. Thank you. Uh, we have some information items here now requiring action by the Board. Uh, Report Seven Eight, uh, Report Fifty Twenty Seven, the purchasing report. Each person there are made by the district and do not meet the threshold of five thousand dollars, not requiring action from the Board. Those items are listed there for, for your approval and understanding. Uh, Report Seven B is a gift to the Board, a 1989 Volvo sedan with extra vehicle parts was donated to Southfield High School Engineering Program. The estimated value was twenty-two hundred dollars. Actually has, nineteen eighty-nine Volvo. Now we come to the public participation portion of the meeting. Comments are generally limited to three minutes. The Board will listen to all comments but may not respond during meetings. Comments may be referred to an administrator or the superintendent for follow-up. As a matter of fairness, speakers with complaints against individuals are asked not to mention persons by name. Complaints concerning employees should be brought to the attention of school principals or other administrators before coming to the Board. If cooperation is appreciated. Glad that you, when your name is called, please step to the microphone, state your name and address. And first we have Danielle Green.
Hello, my name is Danielle Green. My address is two nine four five, Shettles Drive, Southfield, four eight zero three four. Today I am making a complaint in regards to the moderately cognitively impaired room at Bray's Letterly, um, at Bray's Letterly. My daughter is seven years old and she attends there. When I was twenty-five years old, twenty-five years old, I gave birth to a daughter with Down syndrome. I didn't know what to do, I didn't know where to turn, so I started to research like any new parent would. And I found that education is the key. And because of this, I vowed to her and myself and everybody involved that I would try to give her the best education possible. A couple of years ago, I moved to Southfield from Detroit because I knew Southfield could offer my daughter a better education than Detroit did. Recently, because of the cutbacks made in the district, my daughter was placed in a classroom that is K through A, so we have students that is ranging from ages five to thirteen years old. The teacher from Lasherwood was laid off due to the, to the cutbacks and all that stuff, and we understand all that. But in regards to our children's education, we only get one opportunity to educate our children, and this is very important. So when we returned to school this fall, they had a new teacher, and the teacher only stayed for a few days and then she left due to personal problems. So for two months, our children has not had a teacher in the classroom. So that means for the last two months, our children's IEPs have not been followed. Our children have not, have not learned to the capacity that they could have. There was a teacher, a four-time certified teacher specializing in cognitively impaired in that classroom. And because of this, the parents in that classroom and I are very of an arm. Like I said, we have one time to educate our children, and we've had meetings with principals, head of special education, teachers, and superintendents. We've gone through all those necessary means to try to get this problem corrected, and here we are nine, ten weeks into the school year, and our children still have not been educated properly. We've been told that they are acting within their rights, and I feel that is not a suitable answer to what we're trying to do. A long time ago, it was within people's rights to have place. A long time ago, it was in people's rights to ban black people from voting. So people had to fight for their rights and, and to make those laws change, and to make those things change. So even though Southfield may be acting within the legal parameters, we know that we could do, we know that our children deserve more. Thank you.
Next we have Marcia Rogers. Or did Marcia?
Marcia.
Marcia Rogers.
You're okay, I get that all the time.
Okay.
Good evening. Again, my name is Marcia Rogers. I live at two eight, three three zero, Ranchwood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero seven six. And I'm also one of the parents of Kai Rogers, who's in second grade. He was actually here earlier, but I sent him home because he had to go to school around. And we, as one of the parents just indicated, we have tried to go through the correct avenues to get our complaint heard, and I just want to bring up the communication process, which at this time has just been really difficult. We, our parents was not notified that our children would be in a classroom kindergarten through eighth grade. The director indicated that she had sent out a letter in May. None of the parents that I talked to or even in this room received the letter stating that it was going to be a meeting in June to discuss it. The director indicated that no one showed up at the meeting, and of course, no one got the letter. And I believe if this, if the parents had got this letter in May, we would be sitting here ten weeks into class with our students not being trained properly, as we indicated they are not reading their IEPs. And it feels like that our, our kids are actually being taught by just high educators, high, high qualified educators and not educators. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Kareem Dilibut Big.
My name is Kareem Dilibut Big. My address is twenty-four, two nine one, Latro, four eight oh seven five. My, my concern is more so a question, as a parent of a child in this moderate CI class, when will he have a teacher? Has the teacher been hired? When will the teacher start? And the other question that I have is what will be done to make up for the lost time that our children have not received the benefit? I listened to your wonderful implementation of your strategic plan. I listened to all this wonderful training that teachers are receiving. Our children are not receiving the benefits of this, and I want to know what's going to be done to make up for the lost time.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll make sure that, um, your, your questions are answered. You will receive a response from the superintendent's office in regards to this matter.
I can give information this afternoon. Hopefully all the parents, so first of all, let me say that it is unfortunate what's happened. We apologize to those parents that your children have had to have substitute teachers, but there was a personnel issue involved. We could not discuss that personnel issue with parents. So that also caused us some communication problems because we couldn't share a lot of that information. So there has been subs in that room. At first, the substitute was simply a certified teacher, and then at the request of parents for a qualified certified teacher, meaning a teacher who was certified and Mokai or moderately cognitively impaired to be in that classroom, that's the response. I also had an opportunity a week ago, that's Monday, to go into that classroom. I think I shared that update with the Board. I spent three hours there to observe and then met with the special ed director the next day to discuss what we needed to do to support that classroom. We ended the guest teacher on last Friday. HR worked with us to call a teacher back from Recall who was highly certified in that area and was placed in the classroom on Monday. We have hired a teacher, and that communication went out from Miss Byrd on Friday, November fourth, announcing to parents that we have hired a teacher. Her name is Veronica Tate. She has a variety of experiences and she is highly qualified in this area. She will start November fourteenth. It is our plan to have the transition teacher who is there now and the newly hired teacher in that classroom until December sixteenth, which, which is when we go for the break. And then I will go back into that classroom with Miss Byrd and we will do another assessment. So we will have two certified teachers in that classroom and three shared professionals. That will be five instructional adults for thirteen children. We will do that until, as I said, December sixteenth. Then we will, I will go in, back in the classroom, and do another assessment for next steps. But it was unfortunate, the parents are absolutely right, that ten weeks have went by when we didn't have a permanent teacher in that classroom.
Thank you. Um, I would just like to say that I've experienced some of these issues myself. When you have personnel issues that are involved in, in contracts and things of that nature, it does cause a lot of problems in trying to move people around. My son, when he was, I think, in the third grade, just prior to school starting, we had two teachers transfer. They didn't leave the district, they transferred within the district, but he didn't have, he didn't have a teacher for the entire period of his first card marks. And it's unfortunate, but those things do happen. Hopefully, what the superintendent has proposed will work for you and we can put this, this issue, you know, to rest, and we'll be working with you. I mean, this, the one thing that you have to understand about this Board, this Board is, you know, very transparent. We work with the community and try to resolve issues we don't run from. This is difficult, and I know that, you know, right now it may just seem like, you know, we're not rushing this on. We've been aware of it, and we kept aware of it, but she is our educational leader for the district and all the responsibility lies with her. And so hopefully going forward, you'll get a better resolution to this issue. All right, we now come to the Board Matters, and the list board is able to share information with the community, and we'll start with Miss Smith.
Thank you.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, um, last week, most of us attended the two thousand and eleven Annual Fall Conference of the Michigan Association of School Board Members. The conference was held last Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, October twenty-seventh and thirtieth, in Travis City, Michigan. Most of us sitting here attended the conference. We all aspire to become certified board members, so when I communicate with you, you'll know that we're qualified to talk about what we're talking about. We attended classes and clinic sessions. Conference started at eight o'clock in the morning and most days of classes at nine PM. Had classes from eight to four, and then again from six to nine PM. I took six classes during the entire session, and they were all learning. I learned quite a bit. During that four-day conference, we have two days of award presentation, and I'd just like to highlight some of the, uh... And I'd just like to highlight some of the presentations that were committed at this conference by Southfield Public Schools, Public Public Schools. Two thousand eleven Education Elect, Elect, I'm sorry, two thousand eleven Educational Excellence Entry, Local School District entry by category. We now entering latest leaders from R.A.M., Brayce Letterly, K through eight. MacArthur Say Yes to Success. MacArthur K through eight University.
And that was under the four and half school category.
Correct. Also, Laybrook Lovely Ladies. Health and School Safety Awards. Under our Creative and Media Arts. MacArthur In It to Win It. Under our Transition. Under Improving Student Achievement for at-risk and special education students. Transition Academy Leap Learners Excellence Group. Attitude Program, Southfield Regional Academy Camera. Improving Student Achievement for English Language Arts and Social Studies. The Bucket Filling Initiative, Stevenson Elementary Schools. Under Professional Development, School Improvement. Partnership for Leadership and Success, McIntyre Elementary Schools. And those are all programs that this school participated in. The ones that were nominated for awards are as follows. Community Relations, Getting to the Root of It All, Morris Atleti Elementary. Journalism, Southfield High. So our schools are awesome. They did a great job. And we want commitment. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. This is good.
Oh, yeah, I, I'd like to say I attended that conference as well. And it's one of those workshops where we get together and we look at best practices. Well, Southfield Public Schools has now become a best practice. On a national level, we get together for professional development as board members. And we look at the different school districts around the country. And I'd like to see this year, this will be my second year attending, I'd like to see more of our district being studied and looked at on a national level. I know we got glimpses last year from Artie Duncan Boggs. But this past conference and a couple of weeks ago, Southfield Public Schools definitely made a presence. So we're being looked at. They're studying our best practices to make themselves better people. Individual board members that attended, without a doubt, engaged in leadership capacity. For, for me personally, it was about professional development. I've finally completed my first level of certification. And I look forward to becoming a master board member. So it, it, it was no walking apart, that it wasn't. And we were going, we were in class by eight o'clock. Till nine thirty, ten o'clock. And I'm not saying on our way to class at eight o'clock. We go to this like college, I won't read you. I said undergrad, not graduate, undergrad. So we, we, we worked hard. We looked at other districts and what was working out for them. But what was really, really, really cool was the fact that they were looking at us. That made me feel extra special. Told me, from my colleagues, that we're doing something right. So for the sake of time, that's all I'd like to say.
Being heard about tonight, the, what our teachers are doing for us, national board certifications, the various certifications that our teachers have in their various disciplines, student achievement, and also our fiscal responsibility being one of the only in the state for thirty years of fiscal responsibility. And to the parent that said, education is one time, education is continual, on a daily basis. And we are here with you to support you. Once we find out that there is something that needs to be corrected. What we were taught at this conference is our eyes are in, we are monitoring. But the person with the responsibility, you heard me read earlier, is that superintendent who delegates the responsibility to individuals that we hire, that she recommends. And we go back and forth sometimes with those recommendations. If he gets it right or we get it right, but we all agree. But believe, once we find there's an issue, we respond. We're very transparent. We have nothing to hide. You've heard this before from me. We don't get paid for this. Our payment is to see the students grow and learn, walk across that stage on a day-to-day basis. And then come back to be in the community, at the county, state and federal level, providing input, becoming model students and parents in the future. At our August retreat, each of the trustees here at this board agreed to pursue certification that you heard about tonight. Through the Michigan Association of School Board Boards Certified Board Award Courses, the Board Member Award Program offers school board leaders, us, a way to develop new skills, stay up to date on educational issues, such as the one we were addressing tonight, and earns recognition for professional development, as was spoken about trustees who as a school board member. The one hundred level courses, which there are nine, was developed as a core curriculum for board member certification. Completion of the entire series is required to be received your first level certification, the Certified Board Award Distinction. All the things that are going on in this district, this district deserves an honor board. And I will not stop until that happens. And everyone on this board remembers, that's what we agreed to do and I expect that to happen. Board members are more effective and informed when developing or dealing with the legislative process, policies, school finances and school budgets, basic school law, curriculum and instructions, labor relations and community relations, and board governors for data, data, data-informed decision-making. That's what we're all about here. So once we all complete our level one hundred, as trustee Robinson stated, we'll be your honor board for Southfield Public Schools District. And there are eighteen, two hundred level courses and nine, three hundred level courses. I too want to be a board, will be, the master level, Certified Board Number, before my tenure's up.
So tonight, and in every one of our board meetings, I think you see why I am so very proud to serve on this board. We have an outstanding board, an outstanding school district. And at the conference, when I said, well, you know, if someone discussed a problem, I'd say, we don't have that problem in Southfield. They'd say, oh, well, Southfield. You know, like, our name is already out there. People understand who we are because of our super tendency to testify, because of our financial situation, but mostly because of what our students do. Now, I would like to tell the community that we, and you well know this, I'm not telling you something you don't know, that we cannot run this district without money. Our programs cost money. And our teachers are worthy of their salaries. We can't make them make sacrifices to run a school district all the time. We have to educate our children and do it the best way we can. It takes dollars. You heard me read the resolution on Senate Bill Thirty-four. That's not all that's happening in this state. Bad things are happening. We need the community to get involved. There was a letter, the press was tight enough to publish my letter on Sunday. Did anybody see it? Letter to the editor? Well, it talked about charter schools. Do you know there are seventeen charter schools in Oakland County and nine of them are in Southfield? And every child who lives in Southfield and goes to a charter school is taking the foundation allowance with them. And they do not do the job that we, we do. They don't have a NASA lab and a robotics team and academies that are outstanding. Everything we do just seems to me so outstanding. They don't have those things. And we need to make the state understand the damage that charter schools are doing to a district like Southfield. Really. And they push us to the wall every year. Dr. Cook Robinson did not sleep her nights at a time because she was worried about where she was going to find the cut in our educational process. So we have charter schools. We have movements to punish unions. I can only say that they're trying to punish unions where no longer allowed to collect union dues. And you know, that's a computer-generated thing. It's the easiest thing to collect union dues. They want to have right to work. I spoke about that last month, the right-to-work state. And the union people have to fight that. A right-to-work state means that if you get a job in a unionized district, you don't have to join the union or pay dues to it. Well, if you're getting all the benefits, like healthcare, which every human being should have, it's a human right to have healthcare, you know, somebody has to pay for it. Somebody paid to get it for you. So, and there are multiple, multiple things that they're doing. They want to privatize teachers. We have an outstanding staff in Southfield. We can't do what you heard described this evening without outstanding people. If they privatize teaching, you know, every one of your complaints will be multiplied many times. We've heard a plea from special ed parents that, you know, if you think it's, if we have problems now, it's going to get much worse. And we do recognize your problems and do our best to solve them. We care for our students, we care for the product, the graduates, and we need your help. You need to contact your legislators and complain in a clear, loud voice that education is untouchable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Catherine. I concur with all of the points that are made by my colleagues tonight. Public education is under assault in this, in this country, not just here in the state of Michigan. And we all need to understand that. Because free public education is the cornerstone of our democracy. The things that are going on right now are going to change the very core of how we live or the things that we have become accustomed to here in America. If we don't stand up and, and in a loud voice and say that we're not going to just go for this, we'll be contributing to our own demise. It's a new day. We are actually going to make a joint statement with our bargaining units. And this has got to be a first, where we actually have the union, as well as administration, the board, saying in one voice that we stand together, that we are going to challenge these, these things that are coming before us. And these things seem to be coming faster. As soon as you think it's over, there's more coming and more. There's an agenda here to, you know, turn back the clock, it seems like. And we can't just sit by like she's the much as happened. Part of the education, I believe, that has to take place after this. We have to teach our young people how to stand up, how to stand up for themselves. And we do that by our example. You will see in the coming weeks, this board making that statement. And hopefully we'll have others join with us to say that we are united against this assault on public education. I want to lighten things up a little bit.
Yes, and so I want to, today is November the eighth, election day. I ran the polls, only a few other people had voted at Thompson while I was there at four o'clock. And we have, I know I appreciate the choir, you are the people who come to our meetings if you want to hear. But we have to instill in our young people how important voting is. Because the reason we have this problem is because those people were elected by the electorate because not everybody went out to vote. You have to vote, your children have to vote, and you have to tell your neighbors how to vote. If they don't know, tell them. Tell them, this is the most important thing we do.
Yeah, I've got one more important thing. I have to honor and encourage today to escort Dr. Fifty Cent from Livingston College to both high schools to recruit man and vocal students. And there were eleven students from Southfield High and Southfield Laybrook. And they each were offered thousands of dollars. And Southfield Laybrook, students received fifty-six thousand dollars in scholarship. Southfield High, sixty-one thousand.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. And within that same vein, you know, getting back to, I'd like to lighten up, talk about our students. Southfield High just won the district championship last Saturday. I mean, the department actually smashed them in our last. Final score was twenty-seven to nine. But we're playing now regional, and regional championship next, this Saturday at one o'clock. Please come out. I mean, you're going to see, you know, some very talented people. And then not just, not just the athletes on the field. You see the band perform, I mean, just everything. It was a, it was a gorgeous day Saturday. And, you know, we need to have more of the community come out and see it. I mean, that's the thing that builds community and that's what's making this community special. So Saturday, it's one o'clock, Southfield High, we're playing against Birmingham Brother Rice. And it's going to be a big game. I think the weather should hold up from what I'm seeing right now. So it could be a good time for everybody. So please, please, please come out. All right. Future meetings, November twenty-second and thirtieth, and student hearings. December thirteenth is the next regular board meeting. I got you. Board, you have to go in closed session. So I'll take a motion, we're going to recess, but I'll take a motion to go in closed session. Move, support it. Okay, after recess, we'll be in closed session. And that, this meeting in Southfield Board of Education is adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.